The May 18th, 2011 of the City of Santa Barbara City Council Ad Hoc Subcommittee on the General Plan Update will now come to order.
Yes.
Any members of the public wishing to comment on items not on today's agenda? Seeing none, we will go on to that first item. Residential Density Ranges and Locations. One of our favorite and long enduring topics.
That's the perfect introduction.
Betty, John, you want to start out on this?
Thank you. We do have somewhat new information, but on the continuing topic of density and ranges and locations. And as you were really getting into quite a discussion at your last meeting, a couple of things we were hearing. One was wanting to look again at some of the drawings. And again, these are prototypes that we prepared under a certain range of density, a range that actually isn't quite being discussed in the same manner at this time. But some new discussion also was evolving towards the end of the meeting last time, that maybe a density range in the area of 35 dwelling units per acre I had offered in doing some studies. And given that the council range of opinion on density, there's still interest here at the Subcommittee that Councilmember White has certainly expressed, and we've heard from some of the other council members, that something beyond what we called medium-high, be it through overlays or other density ranges is of interest. So, given that, we have some new information. You could say it was a proposal. It's really, it's not per se a staff recommendation, but we've had the opportunity to think about it. We put together some information that we think moves the discussion further along, possibly, if you're interested in looking at another range of density. So, we looked at the drawings, and John will quickly review those with you since we haven't done any new drawings on any new ranges. It's just a general observation that buildings would be similar or smaller. We do want to explain how we came up with a new range. Then, John, it'll also explain the where and how we think we're simplifying the map and the overlay approach. So, I realize this really is before you all to negotiate this type of discussion, but we thought this might be a new starting point, a little bit different than where we were some of the earlier discussions. So, we've taken the liberty to do that. We hope it's helpful for you.
Sure.
So, with that, I'll turn it over to John. And then, as we all know, if we have time as we reach the end of the agenda, some discussion about further general plan review, getting back to council and all of that is really important, if we can have that today, too.
Absolutely.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay. Thanks, Betty, for that introduction. And with that out, I would ask you to turn to the two colored tables, Attachment 1C-A and B. And the first one, 1C-A, titled Average Unit Density Program: Multi-Unit or Mixed Use, Density Range of 15 to 27. What we've done here is essentially taken the variable density range and translated that into the Average Unit Density Program in order to keep things as simple and as equivalent, if you will, as to what we have on the ground today. We've heard that a number of times that the committee would like to see this stay as it is. So, that's what we've done. And the only really minor change here, other than calling it something different, just the multi-unit or mixed-use range of 15 to 27, is that the average unit sizes are slightly larger here to reflect bigger units outside of the downtown area. And if you'll just recall that, you know, what the census data tells us is that although the average size of households and families are shrinking to less than 2.5 over the last 10 years, within that range, there is a, if you look at the renters, that segment of the population, that cohort, if you will, is actually increasing in terms of household size. So, we have this dual strategy of, in some areas, we're looking for larger units to accommodate bigger renter households. And then, towards, the other strategy is to look at these smaller household sizes that we've been targeting at two bedrooms, two baths, 1,000 square foot. That's the number, kind of the sweet spot, if you will, that's been talked about quite a bit. So, what you see here, again, reflects what we have today in terms of our density range for variable density, 15 to 27 is exactly the same. And then, this range of units from 14, 50 square feet to 800 square feet. And that's a little bit larger than you'll see on the next table. So, if you flip the page then to Attachment 1CB, what you see are, actually, two tables. The one on the left-hand side is for the second range of density, again, and it applies to multi-unit or mixed-use. And it goes from, it picks up where the last one started at 28, goes 28 to 36. And this was about what was being discussed at the last meeting. And so, the idea was, okay, how can we develop this a little bit further and play with the variables, the levers, if you will, to try and meet everybody's needs in terms of densities, having, you know, a second tier of density? That's the first assumption of looking at this table. And then, the size of the units, that, you know, slightly larger units that range between about 1,200 to about 1,000, so maintaining, again, that, those range of units. And then, look at how that would compare with what's being, what was proposed by the Planning Commission. So, for example, the Planning Commission had proposed, as a starting point of the second tier of density, a 45 dwelling unit per acre maximum, and here it's 36. In terms of what the Coalition had proposed, again, they were looking at 1,000 square feet and making sure we can hit that number for that size of the unit for, you know, the sweet spot. So, again, that shows here at 970, so it more or less meets that criteria. But again, bearing in mind that, you know, most of the time, you're not going to see projects. People may come in and propose these higher densities, but most of the time, they're going to be, fall somewhere in the middle of this range, you know? So, somewhere around, we would expect somewhere around 32 dwelling units per acre at slightly above 1,000 square foot units. And then, if you shift over to the right-hand side of this table, then it looks at the overlay. And this overlay, in order to keep things simple, again, kind of like how the Coalition had proposed that all the, for rental employer housing, it would all be held at 600 square feet. And so, what that does is, it gradually increases the Flora ratio a bit as you get into the higher densities. But again, the highest density that you reach with this particular formula is 63 dwelling units per acre. And what's, the key thing here to look at that's different from what you've seen before is that for the overlay, we're looking at something between, we've talked about a 50% overlay. That was originally what was proposed by the Planning Commission. And then, later on, there was talk of 100% overlay on, you know, a lower density. Well, this is looking at a 75, sort of halfway in between, 75% overlay, in order to get us to those numbers, those kind of the magic numbers that people want to see. So, you got the unit sizes about right. For the second tier of density, you're holding it less than 45 at 36. You're holding the overlay units at a small number at 600. And then, you're topping out for the overlay at a little over 60 dwelling units per acre, which is this threshold of incentive to get the rental built. So, with that sort of laying the groundwork here, I'll come back to the map in just a second. I just wanted to give you a sense of how that kind of stacks up with some of the other examples you looked at. And again, the FARs you see here are strictly for residential. They don't include any commercial, and they don't include the parking, and they're really there just for a sense of reference, so you kind of can compare. They don't intend to include everything. It's just simply there for reference. So, in going back to these last two examples that were drawn up by Richard Redman at the beginning of the year, we selected the two, basically, the high-density rental employer and the Coalition rental employer, because we felt that those, you know, were the biggest projects, you know, the most dense. And those both came in at 65 dwelling units per acre. And again, remember back to the Planning Commission recommendation, 45 dwelling units per acre for the second level of density. And then, you did a 50-percenter on top of that, and that's how you got the 65 dwelling units per acre. So, and I know this is a little complicated, but just kind of bear with me for a sec here. What we find in looking at this new proposal, and I'll call it, you know, this is the Option 5 one, you get, you end up with a little bit more square footage than you do with the high-density rental employer, because the high, this particular example held the units at 750. You remember, the Planning Commission's recommendation was hold everything at 600 across the board. That's how you get the smallest buildings, is by keeping the smallest units. And you folks said, well, let's look at something a little bigger. So, one of the examples we chose was 750 across the board. So, this latest Option 5 actually is, falls in between these two examples in terms of square footages, because of how the formulas work. And I'm not going to get any more detail on that, I promise. But you get a little bit more square footage in Option 5 than you do in the high-density rental employer, but you actually get a fair amount less square footage than the Coalition high-density. So, I just wanted, just to give you kind of a sense of reference, so you look at these and, you know, you get a sense of how big would that be? How big would Option 5 be in relation to these two that you looked at? And then, again, just a quick little reference here. If you look at Attachment 1B, which is this one fold-out, the 11-by-eight-and-a-half-by-14 fold-out, and this is basically Paseo Chapala, and this is a building that's on the ground now, everybody's familiar with it, and it comes in at an FAR of about 2. Now, if you take out the commercial and the parking, and again, I was using these FARs strictly just to do a real rough kind of comparison, you get about the same FAR with Option 5. You get about a .1. I think I came out to a .94 FAR for Paseo Chapala. And if you look at the green table at the highest density, you know, that would come out to be about 1.17. So, it's about the same FAR roughly, maybe a little bit more. But the main difference is the density. You know, the Paseo Chapala was coming in at 33 units per acre. And Option 5, when you add in the overlay at 75%, it's almost twice that amount in the same building envelope. And again, and Betty kept wanting me to emphasize, you know, these are the highest densities, the biggest possible projects, but typically, we just don't see that. You know, we see something, the projects come in lower than that. By the time they go through design review, and, I mean, certainly, they'll be proposed at that density, but that's not typically what you'll see on average. So, with that, I would ask you to turn back then to the map, the colored map.
Mr. Lebber, excuse me. Is that why you said that you expected to see 31 to 32 on the green chart rather than the higher?
Yeah, exactly. That's exactly what I meant. That's typically, I mean, and the same thing goes, for example, if you look at the previous chart, 1C-A, you know, under variable density today, you know, we typically, most projects come in at about 20 dwelling units per acre. That's over the last 20 years, that's what, that's been the average, you know?
These are free market?
They're both market and affordable.
Okay.
Yeah. So, if you look at the Option 5 map, and this takes basically this Option 5, the two tables, and lays them out here, and the idea here was to try and combine 3 and 4, and see how we could take the maps, options, 3 and 4, and condense them down into, that made sense for these densities and unit sizes. So, what you see basically is for the first level of density, 15 to 27, what we have today reflects variable density. That's all the beige and light pink areas on this map. So, you know, it's, it's the majority of our multi-unit and mixed-use uses. Multi-unit being the beige stuff, and the mixed-use being the rose or pink. And the core, thank you. The EPV core would fall under that 15 to 27. And then, you go to the second level of density, and, you know, that jumps up from 15 to 27 to 28 to 36. And that was the number that you were talking about last week, was, you know, maxing out at 36 dwelling units per acre. And that would be reflected by the darker colors, the dark red, the gold, and the gray. And then, those areas would actually also include the overlay areas, for simplicity's sake.
Excuse me, Mr. Lebber, what's the gold? Is that what you just pointed, near 101 there?
Yeah. It's west downtown, the lower portion of west downtown.
Okay.
So, that would be the only area, the only multi-unit area that would get this next level of density from 28 to 36, and would also be eligible for the overlay, which would bring it up to 63. So, you see here, it's a pretty condensed area of the downtown, doesn't include the core of EPV of the downtown. And you see, if you look closely next to the freeway, it does also reflect a 250-foot setback from the freeway, both up by Lacumbra, and then, as it swings through west downtown, and even at Milpiss, and at Milpiss. So, the area now has shrunk considerably on this, for this particular option. So, that's, that's kind of what I had to present in a nutshell. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Okay.
Should we finish with the rest? There's one more discussion point. On the map, too, one of the goals here was to simplify and have one range of density to which the overlay incentive program applied, to one clearly designated area, and then the other status quo. We also prepared attachments, I guess it's called 1E and F, where we talk about the adaptive management program and ordinance that would implement whatever ultimately is decided. And this idea has been supported by the council across the board, yet lately, there's been, you know, in the discussion, there's still been some key sticking points. So, you've heard from the city attorney, you've heard from one another. We tried to just lay it out in writing as a whole, complete program, what we thought this might mean. So, first of all, the idea is, is that if these density ranges and overlay incentive programs are adopted, they would be codified, as well as discussed in the policy documents, and that they would be available to the community to pursue for development for a limited period of time, and with a limited number of units. And they would be, like I said, codified as an ordinance and applied, for consistency with the general plan and the code. In terms of the length of time, we provided you with information that this time period in which an applicant could proceed, we think should be more than five years, particularly because I think that the monitoring and information that you and the community want to get out of the project, to see if it's effective, what are the people's parking habits, incomes, you know, trans turnover, or whatever we may be looking at. We really need to see a project or two, hopefully, more than one in one area occupied. And when you look at the timelines, including what time property owners, development teams take even to do work before they've come to us, and then, the city's review process, construction, and everything else, five years, I really think that you won't have the results that we're looking to analyze. So, we're saying seven to eight years would probably be a better timeframe.
So, even if somebody got out of the gate tomorrow, it'd still be five years before you'd see something on the ground, you think?
Right. Because I could tell you, no one's getting out of the gate tomorrow, because we don't know where this discussion's going. It's, I've been talking with people, and it's very hard to advise or for them to understand what would apply. So, also, no one will be really getting out of the gate until we get the ordinance drafted, and that will follow your policy adoption. So, the policy adoption to ordinance hopefully won't be too long, but we're thinking seven or eight years will produce some results for you. The next thing is the number of units. And if the time period, if you all agree, the council ultimately agrees that maybe it's a seven or eight-year time period, well, the number of units should go up under that time period as well, we believe. So, we recommended, again, we've looked at development trends in the past couple decades, and we're hopeful that some people will take advantage of this program, so we're saying 250 units. It's really anyone's guess and debatable if that number is too high, if we might have more people proposing, or we won't even see that many. But we feel that that's, sounds to us, in our opinion, to be a good range. The next thing is, and Mr. Wiley has discussed this with you, and he came to the podium last time and talked about how, would draft the ordinance to be that if anyone applied to development, for development under this program, they would, and were deemed complete, they would be able to proceed. And we just thought that through, and we wanted to share with you the idea that as soon as a building permit had been issued for the 250th unit, no new applications would be accepted. But it is possible that some applications might have been accepted prior to that, and therefore, there could be a project or two. And again, we're looking at these really big numbers, but if we think about Santa Barbara, and we think about where are, you look at this map, and we've looked at the dot map, you know, some will be a conglomeration of lots, we might see some bigger unit, projects, but some may just be an R3 property owner or a C2 property owner deciding to build five smaller units instead of two. So, we could go over the 250 if we're allowing the ones that are pending officially to complete the process. Again, in our experience, working on new development standards, it's been a pretty reliable and reasonable trigger to say, no new applications, but process those that have been deemed complete. So, that's our recommendation. The other point that you've talked about is, is this a sunset?
Excuse me, Ms. White. Would that be a time and/or number?
Yes. You've always said whichever was, came first.
Okay.
Yes. So, if 250 units got in the queue and got to building permit in four years, which I don't think will happen at all, but if it did, the ordinance would be written such that at that point, no new applications would be accepted, whichever occurs first. I understand that. The other kind of detail--
Betty, in the Attachment 1F--
Yes.
The, next to the last paragraph says, "The staff proposed applications be issued building permits during time, and have been issued for 200 units."
Oh, I'm sorry. I kept going back between 2, 250, whatever number you choose.
Okay.
Yeah. I think, I'm sorry, that was me--
So, where are we? Where is staff, anyway?
That should have said 250.
Okay.
For consistency, I think when we, some earlier paragraph, I said, "The discussion to date has been 200," but I meant to move to 250. The other thing is, what would happen once the program ordinance either has a real sunset that's written into the ordinance, or whether or not it's a stop and evaluate, but the ordinance is still on the books? I mean, we, anyway. In either event, what's the fallback? What's the, what would take place? Again, this was an idea from Councilmember White, and you all discussed it a little bit. And we just wanted to note that certainly, at the time of looking at this more closely, we would review the variable density ordinance with you at that time. And if there was anything that needed to be tweaked, or what you wanted to debate your fallback position, of course, we would, we would put that out there. This is the variable density, this is what you expected to fall back to. But there may be a desire to modify it slightly. I just wanted to say that when you look at that in the future, we have problems with bedrooms, for example. I'll just tell you that staff at that point in the future, at some point, really may want to ask for council direction on why we won't let someone have a den, you know, and that counts as a bedroom. There are a number of problems with the variable density scenario, current ordinance, and you all are aware of the ones that seems like, well, we've got these huge studios or huge one bedrooms. But the definition of bedroom and floor plan manipulations that people do, too, are just kind of ridiculous. So, when, when the Councilmember White said the fallback would be variable, I was like, oh, well, I at least want to add, I just want to get on record that we, we might want to look at some details on that. So, that's, that's our report on all this, these are all the topics you've been talking about, just providing you a little bit more detail and something to chew on, something a little different.
Different angle.
Different, but the same. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Questions from committee members?
I'm going to ask my question.
Okay. I have a question. Could you, Ms. Weiss, when I was looking at this, I wasn't quite sure what you were proposing in terms of when a, when a project is allowed in and when the cutoff comes, in terms of number of, you know, number of units, total number?
Right. We, we felt that a project isn't really a project in terms of, if you're going to limit a certain number. The idea that we want to have a limited number, yet we want it to be an incentive program at the same time, and we want to see results, our feeling was that issuance of building permit is real. Any earlier stage in the development process, if the allocation of this 200 or 250 or whatever it is occurs any time earlier, people are holding on to something that we may never see get built. And, and again, it all depends on the economy and so many different factors of how successful this, or interesting this program's going to be. But really, any point before building permit, this is mostly academic. And it's going to be a rush to, can I be in with my application? And it might not even be, you know, one that we really like, and it takes us months and months and months to process for ABR concept reviews. Whereas another one, if they're able to apply, and it's a good project, they can get through, and whoever gets to building permit, that's a real project. So, count it, building permit. And then, Mr. Wiley had explained, that is when you would say, no new applications. As soon as building permits for 250 are issued, and that could be written in the ordinance, and it's a defining point, where we can say, no new applications under this program are allowed. And it's, it's legal. It's illegal, and it's a fairly standard, not standard, but it's not unusual, such a thing could be done.
Do we have a, do we have an idea of how many projects get into the pipeline but never get to the building permit stage? Do we know what that proportion is?
Well, we do know that, like, in the last 10 years, that proportion was quite high. And I'd have to review the development trends where we did look at that. It happened in the prior Measure E. It's all a matter, again, of economic cycles. At this time in the process where the council and the community was going to adopt the charter and the general plan, it was just a boom time. Our pending and approved list were hundreds of thousands of square feet that never got built. And right now, we're not seeing very many, and we have seen the, in the last, I don't know, about three to five years, some, the pending projects that are still moving forward are institutional, they're a long time in the community. And so, there were projects on CODA here in Anacapa, those have gone away. So, certainly, all proposals, there's a percentage, I can't tell you what the percentage is. But depending on the economic cycle--
Sure.
--it goes up and down, right? And there are times when quite a few drop off.
Okay. Mr. Wiley, did you have something to add?
Yes. Councilmember Francisco, you know, Betty mentioned that we talked about this prior to this meeting, and it just, it struck me how complicated this is. It's always appeared complicated, with a lot of different factors. And, I mean, the economy is such a huge factor, but one of, one of the factors, in addition, can be a project that an applicant developer insists on applying for, wants to push through, but maybe not, apparently, a very good project, not a project that's ultimately going to succeed in getting its development approval. And the fact that having a project like that in the system could be bumping other good applicants, good projects, out of the way. How do we avoid that? And I, I mean, I hate to give examples, but I can think of an example, a few years ago on Outer State Street, of a very big project that ultimately really didn't impress the discretionary review bodies, including the city council. But a project like that could take up some of that 200 or some of that time, and so-- But a project like that could take up some of that 200, or some of that time, and so, a developer, an applicant, could look at that and say, "You know, I don't even want to take the risk of going through the, all the trouble of trying to get an application in, and get it complete, and then going through environmental review," because a lot of these projects will have more than a categorical exemption involved. It'll be expensive and time-consuming, so the goal just was to try to have that initial, whether it's 200, 250, or five years, or seven years, to have someone know, of once, if I'm in before they've issued 250 building permits, I get to finish. Doesn't mean you get approval, because that's still, that, we're not changing that, that's still up to the Planning Commission, and possibly the city council. But at least I get to get to the end of the process, and I won't be frozen out because they hit 250, and then they just say, "Well, you know, I'm sorry you've been in the process for two years, but you're going to have to sit on your hands."
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Huchkas, you had a question?
Yeah. Mr. Wiley, where does the building permit criteria that Ms. Weiss proposed fit insofar as what you're saying?
So, I think the concept would be that this ordinance would be in place, and the fundamental aspect of this ordinance, obviously, what we're talking about is, it sunsets by itself.
Right.
The vote, let's say the vote is in the year 2012 on this ordinance. It takes five council members to approve that ordinance, and of course, then it's going to take five council members to amend that ordinance. So, but in 2012, this ordinance presumably get approved by five council members or more, but it would sunset automatically, on its own. The sunset would be once, let's, let's say 200, let's say, once 200 building permits have been deemed ready to issue, not necessarily issued, because we get people who actually are entitled a building permit, and for whatever reason, maybe they can't get their financing, they don't pull a permit. So, we'll say, 200 permits ready to issue, we will not take any more applications, but until we, or five years. But until we reach that point, whichever comes sooner, we will take applications, we will deem them complete, we'll work with them to get complete applications, and if you get deemed complete before we hit 200 or five years, you get to finish out the process. You, you get to actually get to the Planning Commission, and you might get approval. So the 200 just functions about, to cut off applications, if you will.
So is that not different? Because you were talking about actually pulling both, a building permit--
No, he said the same thing.
Okay.
It's when building permits are issued for 200 units cumulative of however many projects, that, Mr. Wiley said, "That's different than plan check." I mean, we, we're on the same page.
Okay.
We went back and forth with this, that, again, if the idea is that we're going to put this program out there for people to do it, and get it, the projects done and on the ground, that means, what, building permit is the, the point that makes the most logical sense, because people drop out of plan check as well, as he mentioned.
And building permit is when you have to put your money on the table, is that correct?
Right. Usually, you have your construction financing, you have a lot of things lined up, that's still going on during plan check sometimes. So, it's really, the issuance, people are ready to dig that next day potentially, really.
Right, and they pay a bunch of money--
But up until then, they may not be ready. It really, it can be right up until building permit.
Right, and they have to pay a, a lot of money when they pull that permit, that's another test.
Our permit processing fee is certainly a line item for them--
A consideration, yeah.
But much greater is the, all the construction contracts and financing for the project, which often, they don't pull usually until they have that, and Mr. White--
Well, and working drawings is a, just a, is a, just a quantum leap. I don't know whether it's 50% of the cost of the drawings, of the, you get 50% to get you to planning entitlement, and then another 50% for working drawings, is, John, is that a ballpark figure? Yeah. So it's, you really put big money on the table for that last lap.
Yes, so this program would apply for projects, and again, in a simplification mode, when we had asked the question last week, which projects? If you look at this map, it's really any project in the cross-hatched area, whether it be an overlay project, or a not extra overlay. So all projects in the hatched area would be subject to this ordinance. This one simple way to describe that as well.
Sure. Okay, any other questions from the committee? At this time, I'd like to open this item up to public comment. Anyone who wishes to speak on it, please come to the lectern, state your name, and you'll have approximately two minutes to make your point.
Is it, I'm sorry, is it just limited to the density issue at this point?
Yes. The issue that we're discussing right this moment--
I have some miscellaneous points for you.
Okay, well, right now, we're discussing this one.
Um, Alight is still concerned with the density numbers, and what we've talked about--
Could you, could you please state your name?
Oh, I'm sorry, Catherine, Kathy McCammon, and we're concerned about the rental housing, how will it stay affordable? Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Gil Berry, local architect, and I'd like to propose something slightly different than you've been considering. I would like for you to consider making a permanent change in our zoning, to do away with the density per bedroom, and go into the density based on use and size, and just make that over the entire city. The R3, the commercial, the whole thing, make it permanent, let it last, and that would change that basic density forever. And then I would propose two overlays. One, that would both be for the five-year experiment, two separate overlays. One overlay for rental units to give 100% bonus density, it needs to be 100% to be effective. 100% bonus density for rental units, and have that overlay be the entire R3 zone and the entire commercial zones. It needs to be a large area to take into account opportunity sites, it needs to include the R3 zone, because that's, the land's about half the cost there, so that needs to be a large area. Rental units are the only true affordable housing for our workforce, so we need to have a large overlay to be able to have some happen. And then, the second overlay would be this experiment that's been talked about, for a limited part of town, maybe Milpus, the CM zone, where the density goes up to the higher level of like, you know, 28 to 36, and that would also go away at the end of five years, but that would be a separate overlay. So the idea is, in five years, when it sunsets, that no property owners losing their density, they're not being downzoned, because right now, we've changed the, you know, we keep the density the same, about 20 units an acre, but we change it from number of bedrooms to unit size, so everyone in town gets that change, and then when this five-year experiment goes away, they're not downzoned, they still have that in place everywhere. So I would like you to consider that the two overlays, separate maps, one for 100% rental bonus for the entire town, so to speak, and then a small area for the experiment for the for-sale market units, that shouldn't go higher than maybe 35 per acre. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Sarah Griffin. I have been only following this a little bit, but when I was listening to the 200-unit cap, and that you were kind of cut it off at permit stage, and Mr. Wiley had indicated that there was an issue about those people in the Neverland between application and permit, I'm very concerned about those people in the Never, in that zone, and how many are going to be in that zone, who have already got their ticket to finish out the process. And I would strongly encourage you to have some kind of a cap of how many people have taken a number in the deli line that get to get their sandwich. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Mickey Flax, I'm affiliated with a number of organizations, but I'm speaking as an individual, because none of this has been adequately studied. But one thing strikes me, that a time limit, I understand wanting to look at, what is the result of this after a certain number of units, makes sense. But a time limit is totally arbitrary and makes no sense. That is, tomorrow, we could have a further deepening of the recession, and putting back any kind of development for two or three years, so then the five-year horizon wouldn't be meaningful. Or conversely, we could have a tsunami that, you know, wipes out a lot of our housing, and we have to start building much faster than we had planned, so that, at the end of two years, we would have to look at it, and it, and it wouldn't quite make sense. It seems to me, time has nothing to do with it. If we want to analyze what is the effect on the community of the building and the densities that we're proposing, then it ought to be after a certain number of those units, or in fact, I would say, built, but, okay, let's, let's do it at the, at the permit, pulling the permit stage. But at least, that would give you some idea, whereas time is totally arbitrary and makes no sense. Furthermore, the sunsetting of this, saying that this whole thing goes away at the end of 250 units, or whatever it is, also makes no sense, because then what is the zoning that is there? Do we start, it's essentially starting this debate all over again, with nothing in place at, at the end of, when those units are built. So it seems to me that the wise way to go would be to say, this is, we have a 250, or whatever, unit cap, but at the end of that time, a mandated process of review is required in the ordinance, and at the end of that review, the city council must vote whether to change the zoning from what is decided in Plan Santa Barbara. You see what I'm saying? That it doesn't--
Sure.
--go away, it goes up for another vote, based on the evaluation at that time.
Sure.
It seems to me that those make more sense than what has been proposed, though I am very pleased with, with the staff recommendations, and I think that's something that could really move us a long way forward.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, John Campanella. Echoing what Gil Berry spoke about, I think I'd have a suggestion that as we come down to the areas that we're looking at overlays on, that perhaps the opportunity sites be resorted, to see how many opportunity sites, how many potential units there are within those areas, because you, if, if you put both of them together right now, there's a lot of little circles, yellow circles, that are beyond the recommended area for high density. They're pretty much in the medium density, which is what we have today, which is variable for new projects. So I would, I would request that. Also, I think we should, we would, I'd like to more clearly define what the judgment is going to be for the test period. Is that, are there local residents that are taking over the units? Are they being successful? Are they empty? Are they occupied? Because I think a lot of the things that you may be trying to test will also come through the process, when we determine who the buyers are, who the renters are. And right now, we are losing, size of households are going down, population's going down, but a lot of that is due to actually the nuclear families not being here anymore, or moving away. According to the handouts that we had last, at the last meeting, something like, the households in Santa Barbara that have two parents and one or more children are only 14% of households, and that's down from 19% in 2000, and compared to the current state percentage of 24%. So, we're going down in areas that we don't want to go down. I mean, we do have single people here, and the single residents renting, but we seem to be losing more or less of the nuclear family. So I appreciate John's comment that we have to look not only at smaller units, but also housing people, both in rental units that have adequate size, and also the ability to get some type of, at least an attached unit that they can have for ownership. And I think that's it on, on that, but appreciate the work that's being done. I just want to make sure we do stay a little flexible, and I think we're heading in the right direction relative to the rentals, and making those work, and I just want to make sure we have consideration for the possibility of for-sale units with a two- or three-bedroom units as well as we go forward, and not make it too constraining for those actually to be built. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think this has been getting awfully complicated. This, this is, you were writing a general plan, not a, you're not doing all the nitty-gritty of ordinances, but yet you seem to do that. Couldn't just, as a general plan, that any, that any project in, especially in the areas zone for additional units, be done on a project-by-project basis? And, of course, any project would have to conform to neighborhood compatibility, historic resources, and its overall design. I'm thinking of what happened at St. Francis, the Cottage Hospital project, or what is happening, the Cottage Hospital of St. Francis, that over, that essentially overturned the zoning for that area, I mean, maybe not quite, because it was zoned for a hospital, but certainly residential units are not a hospital. And also, we do seem to be having projects that are coming along, like the Indio Muerto project, that apartment project that I spoke of last time, that, how does that fit in? So, I think possibly it would be a great help to not have all these details, and just have every, any density project for, be it apartments, or condos, or whatever, be judged on a case-by-case basis. Also, following Mr. Wiley's concern, could there be a joint review when these plans start coming to the planning department? A joint review--
Mr. DeForest, could you wrap it up pretty soon?
--by the ABR, the Planning Commission, the HLC, so they can, maybe that would speed up the, just for a concept review, maybe that would speed them up, and they wouldn't be trying to do something that the majority of citizens in Santa Barbara don't want. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, I'm Sheila Lodge. When I looked at the map, it seemed, the area included for the various overlay zones seems very appropriate to me. I suppose I might prefer to see Milpus not included, but this, this works for me. It's when I look at the legends, and the densities that are proposed for the multi-unit residential, commercial multi-unit, and office multi-unit, and commercial industrial multi-unit zones, all at 28 to 36 dwelling units per acre, that I become concerned. And I'm not clear, is that meant to be an upzoning? And that's, that's a question that I have. If it is, if that's meant to be put on the ground, and that's, that's the definition of, say, the red zone, or each of these zones, then you are putting yourself in a position where you have upzoned the property, and if it turns out it's not, it doesn't work, you can't go back. And I thought the whole point of the experiment was to do it, and see if it does work, and then, if it does, you can go ahead and do more. But if you do that, if you upzone in the first place, as I recall from things that Mr. Wiley has said, it's virtually impossible to go back. So I urge you to, to stick with the existing zoning, but apply these various ways of, you know, the rental employer, and the experimental high-density projects within the existing zoning. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Jeanette Duncan with People Self-Help. I was back east because we have a new grandchild that arrived, so I missed your last couple of meetings, but John Campanella's tried to keep me a little bit informed about your process. It is complicated, I concur with the gentleman, but I think I understand most of it. And I'm grateful that you were looking at the unit sizes a little bit different, we talked about that before, for us to try to do something for families, the financing that we apply for, a third of the units would have to be three bedrooms, so this came out 970, which I think is fine, that's doable, and I wanted to thank you for that, I know that came up. But it sounds like you're going in the right direction, and I wanted to commend you for getting this far. I'm just sorry I haven't, I missed the last couple of meetings. All right.
Any other comments? Okay, I'll close public comment. Back to the committee.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. White.
I'd like to ask Mr. Wiley to comment on Ms. Lodge's comment, if you would. I'm hearing that the eight, the X number of units, X number of years, and then their reversion to status quo, shall we say, is a, not a taking, it's a, so, but could you speak to that?
Counselmember White, we often, we haven't talked about the fact that the fundamental premise, the starting point, is the base density. And that's the thing, from my perspective, that gives us the flexibility and answers the legal problems. There isn't a taking, in my opinion, because we are allowing a base density to every property, and that allows a property owner to build whatever size units they want to build, whatever they can get through the design review process. But it still is that base density of X number of units. So that answers the legal concern. Also want to be clear, I don't recall ever saying that the city can't downzone. And that's what I, I've heard a couple people say in recent weeks, I said that. And it is difficult to downzone. It is often the subject of litigation when you do it, but there's no reason why you can't downzone. But we're not talking about a downzoning here. We're talking about a base density with a discretionary program where the property owner decides whether he or she wants to participate in that program, whether it's average unit density or the rental employer overlay. In making it discretionary at the property owner's discretion, we can impose a lot of things on it that we can't otherwise unilaterally impose. For example, insist that rental units stay as rental units and not be converted to condominiums. So, and that would be a recorded requirement, for example.
Thank you.
Chair.
Ms. Weiss.
I'd like to add that for folks such as Ms. Lodge, looking at the map and raising questions, is this the zoning? Is this the general plan? I understand why that could be a concern. We pretty much, since these discussions have been moving and occurring as discussions, we really are presenting display maps to you. The, I don't necessarily, we have a detailed list of zoning map amendments that we've anticipated would occur once a general plan map is adopted. And we've held public meetings and we talked with people along Milpus and particular areas where we know the zone map is going to change from a land use standpoint, and that hasn't been particularly controversial. No change, R3 is still going to be zoned, R3, and the map will still show R3. And when you open to chapter 28, 18, or whichever one it is, for R3, that is where the detail will be, and it will be in an ordinance and it will sunset. I understand how it could be confusing looking at this map and having the question, is this the general plan map that I'm looking at? We've just decided, we can't prepare that yet. I mean, so in the legend, we've given you a legend that makes sense for this display so that you can have a meaningful conversation. And I've been concerned that since this program, it did start at a time where it was going to be the land use designation on the map. But now that there's so much talk that it really is this AMP ordinance, we don't want to put that on a general plan map because we want the map to be able to make sense in a longer timeframe and not having to amend the map all the time.
Sure.
So I don't know if that's helpful to those that are concerned about that detail, but you can be assured that staff is also concerned and that at the one, at the point that we have council direction solid enough, we'll be able to prepare the proposed general plan map. But this is a display map. And then related to display maps, I did want to have you, if you do have your packages with you, conversations from the public, you know, that map that we included in last week's packet as Attachment 8 is the map that shows these other opportunity areas. Again, you're hearing.
The dot map.
You're hearing one member of the community such as Ms. Lodge liked this delineated area because she's been kind of saying, I don't want it on Delevina, I don't want it there. Other people had concerns about, certainly around the bungalow district or Upper Valerio or East Side, so this has come in as a shrinking. I could certainly appreciate Mr. Berry's comments because we've heard, he's commented along those lines throughout the whole process, that rental, that he, type of project that he might be able to work with the property owner on, he feels very strongly is out in the R3 areas where the land values could support that kind of thing. So that's not really a new comment from him, and it's kind of been on the table and off the table. And so just wanted to add that in listening, if you had, if you wanted us to answer any other questions someone had, be happy to, but I understood all the comments.
And just to add one more comment to this, what I call the dot map from last meeting was, and then in addition to Mr. Berry and Sheila Lodge's comments, then you have John Campanella's comments of saying, well, let's look where the dots are. Let's try and be pragmatic, you know, where, you know, the overlay should be extended to where the opportunity sites are. So, you know, you get different comments depending on people's perspectives, and so that's for you to balance and weigh out.
Mr. Hotchkiss? Mr. White?
Well, I think that staff's done some good work here. The trimming of the unit count and the beefing of the unit size, I think, is a constructive I emailed Ms. Weiss just before this meeting that I, one of my issues had been that really no, I wasn't clear on the setback from 101. And I reviewed the bidding and the pile of paper, and I settled back on the Planning Commission recommendation, which I think is what Mr. Hotchkiss was speaking to as well, the 250 feet setback. So that, and, but very qualified language, qualifying language about, we'll take another look and assess the pollution, and if it's not, if it's a reasonably healthful environment, then it would be okay to move forward. So I thought it was a good, Planning Commission's perspective is, I agree with that. I think we've got the decision to make to, how do we kick this thing forward? And I put on the table last time the suggestion that this revert to variable density as one way to find common ground in our different viewpoints, and I hope that that can work. The, what else do we have to talk about here? Well, that's the basic issue that we're working on now. Oh, and I think that the point about how many years it takes to get something done here was enlightening information. It's a real grind, and I think that the staff and our attorney have come up with a way to protect, give the entrepreneur who's putting a lot of money and time and energy into something, a way to have a reasonable shot. So I think that's a good, a good way to go. I think the little extra time is appropriate, and of course, the 250 is the number that I was working with to begin with as well. So I'd be interested to hear how your, how staff's comments are affecting your view at this point.
Mr. Hotchkiss.
Staff, tell me, what do you think of what Ms. Flax said about the time thing? I mean, that seems to me there's some truth to that.
We've struggled with the time and unit combo.
Right.
But, you know, we said we could figure it out, and so we did.
No, I think you've done a good job, too.
Certainly, it's easier if it's one factor or the other, number of units or time. And again, based with the economic cycles and everything, I think she made a good argument that if it's the number of units and projects on the ground that we want to evaluate, let's do it when we reach that point. But I think it may have been Councilmember Francisco or someone else in the discussion that says, if after five or seven years, this isn't working very well, that's a good reason, you know, to evaluate why it hasn't happened over a certain period of time. If this is something that we would like to see, just a time period to check in is a good point as well. And so that's why I think the council ended up asking us to look at a program that included both, because this is unpredictable future.
Yes, so by having a time limit, in fact, if it doesn't work, then we've got a check to.
I think the reason for that was to, if it's not producing the projects that we desired, a time limit to see why not.
Reassess.
Yeah, versus waiting for the units. So that was the, am I correct? That's how I understand. And it made sense to me.
Hope that satisfies Ms. Flax.
At this point, now that we've worked it out, we're okay if it includes both.
No, to, okay, but at least we have the rationale behind that. I think it's a good one.
I think that unless anyone else offers a rationale, but that's what I remember.
No, I think you're correct. Well, I like the fact, I appreciate what the staff has done, and it's working towards a compromise. I can see that. I'm anxious to hear what Mr. Francisco says, but I like what I see so far. Do we call this, is there a different label? Is it the medium to high? Is it the, whatever, right?
We're trying to get away.
Rose by any other name is.
We're trying to get away from the polemics of the high, medium-high, really high.
Yeah, right.
And just call it two levels of density.
Totally high, whatever.
Fifteen to 27 and 28 to 36. Just call it what it is.
All right, good.
Let's see. So my rationale, my reason for wanting to have a time limit as well as a number of units limit is twofold. First, I believe that the whole idea of increased density for other thing, for anything other than a very narrow segment of the housing market, namely the rental market, and even that's questionable. There's not a lot of support for that in the community. There's strong support for it in the developer community, but outside of that, there isn't. And so that's why I wanted there to be a time limit on this. So if I'm going to be able to support something that we can get a majority vote on city council for, it has to be something that I think can have majority support in the community. There needs to be, there needs to be a limit both in number of units and in time so that people will know there will come a point where this experiment will be over, and it will take a majority, a supermajority on council to say, this is great, let's continue it, rather than the reverse, which would be if we just said, if we handled this through the so-called adaptive management approach, and just said, we're doing this, and it takes the supermajority to reverse it. Right? So that's my rationale, both for having a limit in number of units and a limit in I could potentially support a slightly longer time period. I agree that it does take time to get projects done here, and I could probably go along with seven years and 200, 200 units. I think I'd be, I could support that. In terms of the map, I think that, first to address Ms. Lodge's point, it was my understanding that this was essentially a visual, that this was an illustration of how this incentive program would work rather than a zoning map. And so whether we, you know, whether these are the right colors and the right numbers in the right places, the idea is that this map would describe how this incentive program would work. It's not a change to the zoning. So I'm okay with that. I think, you know, one of the things that we talked about last time at our last meeting, Dede Piker isn't here today, but he talked about doing more visualizations and doing a workshop on how these densities would actually look, which is something that I'm still interested in. And I think our original goal was to come back to the council with a complete package, you know, by June. I don't think we're there yet, and I also think, I do think that we've made a lot of progress, and I believe, given the council's preoccupation right now with the budget, we could have, I mean, if we had magically finished everything and we were ready to go to council, this might not be the best time to bring it forward anyway. So I'm thinking if it takes us a little longer to get some, some good conceptual illustrations of what these densities would look like, if the architectural community seems willing to help with that, I think those visualizations would be valuable to people, both in the community, obviously, and on council in terms of making a decision. So I think what I would like to recommend to us is, in view of the fact that this has been a productive discussion, and I think we're getting closer to something that we can recommend to the full council, and that the full council will believe really has been vetted. I would, I would argue that we should continue this discussion a little bit longer. There's no, the council is not going to be thinking about big things other than the budget until after July 1st. So I think we have a little bit more time to bring this before council and bring it before council in a more finished form. So that would be my recommendation. It seems we need to, we need to get a better idea from Dede and some other folks who've expressed interest in this, what exactly they're thinking about. But I think, I think that would be a good idea to have those visualizations of what these different potential densities for the incentive program would look like, and that's what I would recommend.
Question, sir. Would that be in our next meeting, two weeks or whatever?
It would be in a, it would be in a next meeting. I don't know if it would be in a meeting two weeks from now.
I just want to say that Mr. Piker's participated in this discussion on and off when he's had the opportunity and offered good suggestions, as well as other architects and members of the AIA. And they put together a photo presentation during Planning Commission meetings. But the idea of a charrette has been mentioned now, probably two years running, two. So I'm just a little concerned about understanding really how committed and how long would it take and so forth. And I think they, they would probably benefit from, this has been good discussion today, but we, just like before, we started to draw the prototypes. Do you want to give them some guidance? And do you also want to give them some license? So I think a, what I mean by license, free rein to see what they could, they could come up with. We could contact Dede, other folks in AIA, and schedule a specific discussion with you to get an understanding of what it is, where it is, when it is, and so forth, and see what kind of commitment we can have on that. Because I can tell you right now, it's always sounded like a good idea, but hasn't really come forth, and partly because this has been a moving target.
Sure. I think, Ms. Weiss, that sounds like a good idea to me. Why don't we set up that meeting? And I'd be happy to be a part of that and talk about. I think we need a, I think we need an informal meeting as soon as possible, just to make sure that we're talking about the same thing.
I have some information on this. Are you in the morning to go on?
Ms. Flax, go ahead.
I've been working with Dede on this, and I have some information. There is a meeting scheduled tomorrow, in fact, with the charrette planning committee from the AIA and the APA. And that the, and there has already been preliminary discussions. The projection is that the charrette would take place to give enough time to prepare and also to get word out to the community, would probably take place in early July. That's, that's the preliminary thinking. But it is moving ahead.
Miss, may I ask, Ms. Flax? Do you have a sense of, are they going? Do you have a sense of, are they going, would additional discussion on that topic with this committee be helpful in forming guidelines for the charrette?
It might be. I think it would be more helpful for their, for the committee, because then they could give their input as to what they would like the charrette to demonstrate, which would probably be helpful.
Exactly. I think it would be helpful. Okay.
Okay, very good.
I, I think we've got a lot of agreement here today, as far as I can see. Hallelujah.
We shall see. Okay, well, I think, Ms. Wees, how I, I would like to proceed, and I think I'm hearing agreement from my fellow committee members. It sounds like we need to find out about this planning session tomorrow, and also perhaps, depending on what happens through that, we, we may want to arrange a meeting with some of the architects before our next committee meeting to talk about what exactly they could do to help us.
Do you, Ms. Wees, or Mr. Francisco foresee us going to that meeting tomorrow, that short meeting? No, too bad.
No, I think they're doing that meeting, and we're going to ask that they come. And I, I think it would actually be important to be an, an ad hoc meeting here so that the community could also hear what your thoughts were in terms of expectations for the charrette. That would, that would be helpful.
Okay.
So we can schedule, we don't have a date. We'll coordinate, but I would assume that anytime that a meeting could be put together, it'll be helpful information to planning towards the charrette. So we would just look for the soonest date possible for you three to meet for that agenda item. I still, I have a little bit of a concern about how this all gets communicated back to the city council as a whole, because it's a different take than go out there two, three months and jam, you know, and come back with, for direction. So I agree, the council agendas are quite full with budget and also appeals and other things that we're all working on. So I guess what we could do is, we could do an official, you know, email memorandum that this was the discussion today, and ask if, if any two council members feel the need to bring that decision to continue this process and delay it. Well, I'm, I'm calling it a delay. It's a, it's a new timeframe, a new schedule. If any of them wanted to discuss it, then we, we would go about putting it on their agenda. But again, for efficiency sake and timing on council's agenda, that's one consideration I'd like you all to think about. If you'd like us to do it that way, we can do just a communication that this is where this process is going. And if they want to talk about it, they could ask. Otherwise, we'll just keep taking-
Well, I'm, I'm comfortable communicating this and taking the blame for it at our next city council meeting during committee reports, so. So if that's okay with my fellow committee members, you're off the hook.
Thanks. Yeah, one less email. I, I have a question about the rest of the general plan.
Okay.
Certainly, this has been one of the, the key points to a land use settlement in a general plan, and that's why we spent so much time on it, and it relates so closely to the housing element. Those two elements being done together has been a big push in Plan Santa Barbara. But there have been questions raised on the other sections of the element, and it's just a question to you all. I think this committee and staff committed that there would be an effort made to review the, the whole of the document.
Exactly.
So whether or not you want to take any of that up today or combine that in, get this next meeting that could be charrette and review of the document. But there is a little bit of time left today, and staff has reviewed council members' selves' comments. At one time, the review was fresher in our minds, so I actually might be a bit slow in, in responding to some of those points you made. But that's just a question to you, if it's on your agenda today, if you want to do more.
Right. I think, I don't know how, how the others up here feel. My attention has been taken up pretty comprehensively with the, the issues we've discussed in the first agenda item today. And I think in order to do the document review justice, it's probably something that instead of, of, instead of simply saying that we're going to start the comprehensive document review, let's schedule meetings where we say, "These are the sections of the general plan where we're going to do a comprehensive review," so that both the, my fellow committee members and I, as well as the public, know that we're discussing this part of our very large general plan on this day. And I, I think that would be the best approach for, for going through the comprehensive review.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, could I-
Ms. McCammon.
At least. I'm Kathy McCammon, and I'm here for Allied Neighborhoods Association. We have a number of points that we would like to see you discuss.
Okay.
Would it be appropriate to give you the-
So, Ms. McCammon, I, I, I did try to do a general public comment at the beginning. I will do a general public comment at the end as soon as we finish this.
Oh, but I just wondered if you want me to pass these out.
Sure.
Okay.
In terms of approach, staff thinks, in anticipation of, of this review, whatever meeting it occurs at, in your packet for April 22nd, which is where we thought it would begin, we have provided a, a version of all the general plan goals and policies as amended. And certainly, the introductory language on the sustainability framework, the neighborhood discussion is interesting to look at, but the meat of the matter are these goals and policies. So we, we have printed it all out for, for you, and my, my suggestion is we probably just say we start at the beginning and work through each group and chapter of goals and policies. And I had wanted to make notes that, to help you and all of us know where we've already talked about these things. Well, one way to tell is if it's been revised, you can tell that it's already been talked about. But just, I'm trying to think of a way to make the review go quickly. This is, things I've seen Planning Commission and other groups do is, you know, you go through ahead of time, and the chair says, "Are there any comments on page one, page two?" And just try to, you know, work through the goals and policies. And then we would be waiting to hear if after that, you wanted to look at any other of the narrative sections of the element after you've looked at the policy language. Because if the policy language is shifting in some way, then we want to be sure that the narrative makes sense.
Right.
So that, those were our thoughts on, on how we might get through that section.
That seems like a sensible approach.
And you do, you all have that information, and it's online. It was part of the April 22nd meeting package is the, the redlined version of where we are today. Although, we've been keeping note of these meetings. These discussions haven't all yet been reflected here. So, but we've been keeping note of where we might change them again, depending on what you all decide.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Question on the edits. Is it just the red line that has been corrected? Is that why it's in red here? I understand that.
Um, yes, the-
April 22nd stuff.
Yeah, the package of April 22nd reflects changes to the September version-
Right.
-of the general plan.
Right.
Which reflected already changes that we got from council in prior council-
To the March plan, right.
Yes, to the March, right.
Right.
So some of your earlier edits you won't see as changing line, they've become policy language already.
Got it.
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions? So I would suggest that we devote a future meeting, whether it's the next one or the one after, depending on what we do with the density discussion, that we devote a, a future meeting just to the review. And I think, Ms. Wees, your suggestion of starting with the goals and policies and going through that first as an outline makes perfect sense. Okay.
So we're looking to schedule two meetings, one ASAP on charrette, and you don't want me to try to put the review of this, to get started on that one, just charrette and then a separate meeting? So I'm looking for a minimum of two.
Two meetings.
But I actually think it's three.
Okay.
I don't think you'll get through all of the policies in one meeting.
I don't think so either.
So we're going to go back and schedule three meetings.
Okay. Perfect.
Okay.
Okay. With that agreed upon, I would like to reopen public comment on any topic you feel you need to talk about.
Mr. Chair, Mary Louise Days for Citizens Planning Association. I had prepared some remarks on other sections, which you're just saying you're going to do another meeting. But the ones I copied out, printed out for, I think, for the April 22nd meeting didn't have page numbers. Did not have page numbers. So I'm just curious about that, because I don't want to have to print out a whole bunch or find out a whole, a lot more and, and, you know, print them all out again. They seem to be in order, but, huh? Oh, well, what I printed out has no page numbers, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
And if, if any members of the public, such as the Allied comments or Ms. Days, if you want to give them to us in advance and that we could share with the committee in preparation, that would be really helpful, because it is a lot of material to go through, so.
Sure. Yes. Ms. McCammon?
Kathy McCammon, and I've passed out to you some miscellaneous items that Allied had. I thought I would go through them very quickly, because now the first one, there seemed to be a little bit of confusion here. Allied as opposed to tandem parking in single-family zones. But people were unsure of where this subcommittee ended up on that from the previous meetings. Then the other one is, we're very firm in wanting the square footage limited on the non-residential development to a million square feet with an exception for governmental buildings. We think that you don't want to be expanding too much new commercial square footage when we already have a jobs housing balance imbalance. So it doesn't make sense to be adding more square footage. And then also, we've somewhere in the past talked about mixed use. We're opposed to the double-dipping, so to speak, that allows both the maximum in residential units and the maximum in non-residential commercial square footage for a given property. And then another issue, our number four on our list involves the addition of a container or pod to a property in a single-family zone. Now, early, in the past, we had brought this issue up, and we were told, "Wait, we will take this up in the general plan update." And so it really would just take a simple amendment to the single-family design section in the ordinance. So I don't know where that fits, or how it fits, but we, we're told, "Bring it forth at the general plan update." So anyway, that's our comments. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public?
I just want to ask, on the historic element that is proposed, that's being worked on, how is that going to fit in to what is going to, what you eventually are going to have the city council vote on? Are we going to have that in place, or is it going to off in some never, never land? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DeForest. Any other comments from committee members? Okay. Meeting adjourned.